I'll watch it if she.
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Another one? Well, I saw we pinned burners pictures in the county that did have a fire started by a brush pile.
Too much fire.
Where you going, Lovey?
Lovey and Lovey.
Where was it?
It was on Red.
Yeah, Mark, how about Lovey?
It's Red Top Road.
Red Top Road, oh, on Tarble.
No.
What?
No. It was down there on Stevens. They were turning them down through the whole road, re-rapping down through the whole road.
Were they trying to burn a brush pile? Moron. That's why they're proposing a place where King William had a place, but they're running a team. I don't know, Mark, I don't think they've got a team. I mean, that's why we got a person down.
Right, right.
That's correct.
I don't believe it is running a team.
I don't believe a citation's been issued.
Been issued, yeah. Arm, Ben didn't stop that fire.
They got a big man, they got a business owner of the arch.
Can I hear any of you? You what?
They were going to arch it down.
No.
And then, and then, and then.
Or Archer.
That's several of Archer's been in the hall.
Is Archer, we got the money from CDR shit?
No. I've been gone.
Okay.
Nikki's been doing fine job.
She did a really good job.
I've been, I've been out, I've been for courts.
I tried.
I've been here for courts, except when it was March.
But when you wasn't here, Nikki did a good job.
Good morning, we'll call a meeting to order, Young County Commissioners Courts, and then a regular meeting, Monday, July the twenty-third, twenty-eighteen. It is nine-thirty a.m. On my clock. Make note that this meeting is posted in matter of course time required, that all members are present, and if it's convenient, please stand for education and reflection. You'll probably witness. Dear heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the many blessings that you bring to us, we're grateful for this country, we're grateful for the state, we're grateful for this county, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve those members of our society who have elected us. We ask your blessings upon this meeting, upon all the decisions that we make, those that we do make, be in accordance with your will and be in the best interest of the citizens whom serve. We're grateful for all those members of our numbers who serve in arms' way to protect and defend the freedoms and the constitution that we know and that we build by and that we love. We ask your blessings upon those members, people that we know, who have lost loved ones and who are having health issues and different matters and different ways. We ask that you hold your own safety around and comfort around them that only you can provide. We ask that you forgive us for our many shortcomings, as we know you will, in the Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, I have listed under their tax successor collect for continuing education transcript, she'd like to put that on file, and it's a good idea to do so with our county clerk, our. You'll have that as a museum, I suppose. Also, an update on Sheriff's inventory and software, we have this filed with Chris Moody, but I see got another bill here, so.
I thought Chris was gonna be here, I was here for some other reason, so.
Hopefully, if he shows up after a while, we'll, we'll be there. So, you're not here for that issue?
No, sir, not that.
Another issue.
Okay, next we have Rita McCollum with the New Century Veterans Memorial Committee, she's gonna give support on that project and maybe some new information.
All right, thank you.
For the future.
First, yeah, you all know me very well, first I want to thank all of you for the support. Is there anybody here that has not seen the wall and gone? We are really pleased with the outcome, we are just amazed at the whole community's support. There's plenty of money in there now to not ever worry about updates, exceeded the target that we had set, so that's all good. July the thirty-first is my last day on the committee, also Knox Bishop and Larry Hamilton, who you both met in here, are rotating off the committee. Deborah, Deborah Stamper, treasurer, is remaining. I know that Dan De La Cruz is remaining on that committee, we have a new member, Bobby Joe Marufo, you may know her, her husband is a great policeman, and she is veterans-wise, she is gonna be going on to that committee and taking care of brick sales, we think, that she'll be assigned next. And of course, then we have, and many of you may know, Toby Riddell. Toby is grand boy, he's an attorney here in town, and he is the incoming chair, so he will be taking over August the first, and I'm, I'll ask him just to kind of let you know what he's looking at.
Is Holly moving off the committee also?
Holly is moving on, she said she would be happy to still interface some, but she's got that big only part project.
Toby Riddell, I am the incoming chair, as you guys know, I have big shoes to fill. Been on, I guess, what, a year, a little over a year and a half, and one of the few non-military guys on the board, so it took me a year and a half to learn some of the military lingo these people are talking about, but it's, it's an honor to be on the board and going forward. I don't have as much to do as Rita accomplished, but look forward to getting lighting going out there, I know we have that in the process and should be installed in two or three weeks, as well as, I guess, finalizing the committee, maybe finding someone else from the only area to accompany us, and I know Rita said that we're good on money, but it's always good to raise more money, so, you know, we're gonna keep pushing for that and to make sure anyone who's not on the board or on the wall gets on the wall and go from there, but it's an exciting opportunity and I look forward to it.
Thank you all, I've told them how well and how much support the commissioners have all given us, you know, verbally, financially, and with your approvals and votes and encouragement, so we thank you.
That's quite awesome, we've had a lot of good comments with regard to that addition and some particular comments about the war dog, the new Ron War Dog, it looks like standing guard over the walls.
And that's, that's kind of what they do. I think the war dog is so great because it's gonna bring a whole new group of people to the memorials, and then we have, you know, they come to the dog, whether it's their kid that wants to come see the dog or whatever, and then they start thinking about, because one thing, I think, there were a lot of great things that came out of this, and one of those was just the patriotism that's here in the community, that we always see come out when there's an event. We've had two years of people just veteran awareness, and you all know from the SO office that our veterans, not only are they important to us as a country and people, but financially to this county, it's pretty important. So, I think, there's never enough.
And Tim Odom for their contribution towards memorial and war dog.
And Tim Odom is going to be on the committee.
Is the war dog a common memorial?
No, I think there's not more than ten, I've heard there's less than ten in the U.S. You know, where the numbers come from, nobody's sure, but it's not real common, but I think you'll start seeing more because they still use them. You know, Knox Bishop will tell you how effective they are, at least.
I think there's two in Texas.
Two in here.
I think there's two in Texas, since they're setting.
Where's the other one?
Uh, I wanna say shoot from the hip Athens, maybe?
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
I think Toby did a good job, so.
It's gonna be hard to outwork her, Toby.
Yeah, that's true. She's got biders and biders and biders.
And I will bring Odom in the truck and leave him in his office. You know, it's, it's, we started this thing, and y'all saw it from the, when Larry and I were standing here, showing just pictures and how we think, and then we started learning really what all it entailed, and it was really, it was amazing, we really appreciate your participation, Judge Bullock, he came to ninety percent of the meetings at least, which was very valuable because we knew where we need to stop, for one thing, and that helped us be cognizant, and as I said, the Day of Dedication, you know, you've given us prime real estate, and he very quickly reminded me that you just kind of loaned that to us, at least, so those things have been really such a great working interaction with this, and that's why I told Toby it'd like for him to come today with me, because I want you to know him, probably won't be the last time you see him here.
I was mentioning to Rita out in Hollow all ago, that she's one of the most persistent persons, energetic and on fire about this project, and she's been able to lead this project with friends. Her persistence was amazing, and she got it done, and thank you so much for your work and your efforts.
Good job.
Very good.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, I've got one more thing, the waterproofing down here on the corner of the buildings that we redid. I think we originally did it probably twelve or fifteen years ago, and just recently redid that, thanks to Mike and Jenny for, I don't know, most of the company that I've been here. They're helping digging that out, getting it all repaired, then filling it back, and maybe we, maybe we have that issue solved.
So it's completed now?
Yeah.
There's only a little bit of touch-up work they're gonna do only in the near future, there's another project not far from here they're gonna work on, they'll come by, do some touch-up, but that'll be it.
Very good.
So if that invoice comes through, go ahead.
Is there anything else that we need to have, you ever mentioned a lot?
There's a lot of fire blowing around us.
Fire?
Fire.
An archer?
No, one in archer we're helping with right now. We've, we've been assisting Archer this week, Ken, and we assisted Jack Candy this weekend.
What was the neutral cause, I guess, of this one here on Red Top Road?
I think that was the one with somebody burning the brush pile.
Burning brush pile. Is that right?
He said that they'll be able to take this citation hopefully, because you sue.
He didn't say that.
He said there hasn't been one.
There hasn't been one issue because they called the city chief for some reason, and he took the guy's story as it was accidental, he didn't start it, it was rekindled from when it burnt a couple of weeks ago or whatever, so it's being investigated, because there's some inconsistencies in some of our score.
I know from experience, you take a brush pile that's been burnt for a month, depending on the size of that brush pile, it's still burning.
It is.
Had a little breeze and you had it. You got a stump under there.
Even if it's been raining three times, it still burns.
Stump burns forever.
Okay, item number four, it's considered county clerk's minutes from previous meetings, ending July the sixteenth and July the nineteenth respectively, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that may have been made?
So, but.
I have a motion with Commissioner Wiley, and a second with Commissioner Rogers to approve those meetings as presented, all in favor? Five oh. Consider treasurer's financial report, couple dates on securities, security pledges.
I don't think there was any security pledges in this one, but I have the June report, everything's balanced. We still have eight hundred and thirteen dollars in the bank.
Where's the number on?
Eight dollars, and we got, uh, what?
Three hundred and thirteen thousand.
I'd been three hundred and thirteen thousand thirty-six.
We got the, well, we had, they turned in on Friday their June money for the hot tax, four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and five cents, and then.
Four, four oh, and forty-five?
Oh, five.
That brings that over for just a little twenty-five thousand dollars.
And then we got the ninety-two thirty-nine from Ingleside Ranch out in Holley.
You can send a resume and breakfast.
Still moved on the fire from the security pledges.
Second. Okay, we have a motion with Mr. Wiley, second with Mr. Rogers to approve the financial report as presented, all in favor? Item number six, consider all of her budget amendments and voucher papers.
Can I have vouchers payable?
No amendments?
No, sir.
Okay.
Total is eighty-nine thousand seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents, and out of the general, half of it, forty-five thousand four twenty-five fifty-three.
Tell where Mr. Rogers.
I was gonna say, we could stay still three times. I thought the room was gonna let me know.
Post it to Commissioner Wiley, second with Commissioner Sykes to approve voucher papers presented, all in favor? Item number, I know we've gone there that there is one delinquency tax that we've received, that all been up there on the other, ninety-two thirty-nine, from the Ingleside Ranch. Also, we have in there, it'd be in your packet resolution, consider resolution for grant for grant number three-five-zero-seven-four-zero-one, that's a piece of rifle-resistant body armor. That's already been purchased quite some time ago, and it came up time to report those. Financial expenditure, our financial officer, Cheryl reported those, and evidently, when they were looking it over, that there was a resolution that was required for that grant that maybe we didn't present, so you'll find that back in your packet.
It was six thousand three hundred and twenty.
Number eight.
Six thousand. It just simply, because we think it's in the best interest of Young County Forest to have rifle-resistant body armor, you know, all move, all the moves that we execute the grant.
What's the interplay disposal, five years on that vest? Five years, how do we dispose of them?
We haven't, we, we keep them, a lot of times, we use them for training, you know, if they're seven, eight years old, we take them out to the range and use them for training purposes.
Okay, so the grant has no termination provisions in it?
No.
No disposal?
Once the life is up, you dispose of them.
Any way you want.
We disposed of some of them one time, but I think through a local agreement, put them on, first, on forever loan or anyway, Palpatine County, so we get them.
We used to do that to lesser unfortunate compartments.
We don't have a lot of guilty there without the date, but I wouldn't wear one, all I can say, mine, my personal, I have one that I personally own, and I just change the panels out, I keep them out of garment.
Do they not become property of the county once it's read?
They do, yes, they are.
Do they not have to go through the same rivers, disposition?
We've got a count for them for three, I believe it's three years, we'll let them keep turning in reports on them, and if they end of that three years, they're used to it, and they're, plays along with Young County.
Thank you.
Are they, are they waste, are they surplus, or are they?
Yeah, they're, they were going to surplus.
Same information I didn't have, thank you.
Yeah, I guess you can flip them up or.
With a new logic, you can just give them to another.
Well, you can transfer them to another governmental entity, law enforcement agency, and that's what we did with Palpatine County, that's probably been, I don't know, several years ago now.
How many do you have?
Ten or twelve.
Really?
Because we got one for each patrolman, and then.
It was ten or twelve. Value of money loss.
It was six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Something over six thousand dollars.
I'll say it again.
Okay. Motion, Bo Wiley. No motion by me, second Bo Wiley, second Bo Wiley, to execute the resolution requesting rifle-resistant body armor from the Office of Governor, grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Here's, uh, okay. Another bullet point down here is to discuss and consider physical year twenty-nineteen memorandum of understanding with the Calum Ferby unit, that's the nineteen thousand and four million dollars.
Four seven one thousand.
It's the same, although it's presented slightly different, it's the same, one of the same MOUs that we've had for a number of years, it's nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars that I think we've been paying in one lump sum, it appears to be, I think ten thousand dollars of that goes to the cost of the management and utilities and the repairs of the facilities, and the other of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars is for mental, I believe it's mental health services, is what I think that it is.
I never remember though, this being invoiced like this in the past.
Yeah, it's a little different.
It was called letter?
Yeah.
It's a little different.
I noticed that too.
And we haven't broken out the funds in different lines.
Are the number of jobs that have been out there previously in the past, is it still remaining decided, or is anybody not?
There's not, there's not as many jobs out there.
There's not as many jobs out there as there were?
They've had some people lay off, but it's restructuring.
There's another cost that comes along with that, and that's for eight thousand dollars, I believe, and I think that one was specified last time as for intellectual disability.
That's what we.
Usually called adult dayhead? Young County workshop.
Confused on that because it looks different.
I need to change the name. That doesn't exist anymore.
See, this is all counted into that separate part, it's ten thousand on one and nine thousand, nine thousand one and ten thousand on the other.
Now, there's ten thousand on one, and there's nine five thousand four hundred and seventy-five on the other, it's either this intellectual disability service or mental health services, one of the others.
I think we.
We, we get that other eight thousand dollar letter. I would expect.
We changed it to intellect disability, yes.
Which one did I answer?
The eight thousand dollars is intellect disability.
He used to be listed on Young County.
Yeah, and made some more local matches, nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five, and then mental health care is ten thousand.
Yeah.
So we have them all broken out.
So the nine thousand is what they use on repairs, and the ten thousand is on mental health.
The ten thousand on facilities were named without key repairs, and that's our force third eleven, now there might be more than that. There's nineteen, I think there's nineteen counties involved.
So the county puts a scribble on twenty-seven thousand dollars in the mental health care?
That's what we've been putting into it.
All of this, all of this work goes.
A lot of counties. A motion.
Get you.
I have a motion with Mr. Wiley, and a second with Commissioner Rogers to execute the memorandum of understanding with Calum Ferby centers, in a total amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, all in favor? That's for FY twenty-nineteen.
It says it's due October the first.
Yeah.
Does it say the first?
Yeah, it says thirty, evidently, they're there for a quick.
It says.
It only says October thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yeah.
First month of our fiscal year.
We'll see how much money we.
Item number seven is consider employee bonds, being Sherri Lynn Askey, Assistant County Augur, in five thousand dollars, and Margaret Gay Edwards, Young County Juvenile Division Officer, in an amount of five thousand dollars.
Did you say? Nah, I think we said the same time.
I couldn't make.
Whatever.
Okay.
Pick one.
Sykes.
If you make a motion.
I moved me a pretty little bond.
I see.
I have a motion with Commissioner Sykes, and a second with Commissioner Pruitt to approve bonds for Sherri Lynn Askey in the amount of five thousand dollars, and Margaret Gay Edwards in the amount of five thousand dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Here's five.
Fifty dollars? What cost you was it? Fifty dollars?
Fifty, yes.
Item number eight is discuss or reconsider law enforcement interlocal agreement with City of Long. Thank you, Goff, Connie, you want to come on up here?
How was the trip from Molly this morning?
Smokey and Ray.
Don't know.
Don't know, you had a gun from Molly this morning?
Oh, yes, I believe he is a bad person, for saying.
I don't know, have you ever met Connie, if you will come up here and introduce yourself, sort of? Connie Clay.
Mr. Clay, my side, sir.
Good day, sir.
Connie Clay, CLA Y.
CLA Y.
What police department did you work for?
I retired from Shawnee twenty-five and a half, and the last six have been Choctaw.
I understand you come out, did you come out Oklahoma?
Yes, sir.
And give us a little background on your place.
Let's say I did twenty-five and a half years at the City of Shawnee, started a patrol, retired as acting chief there, and after that, I went to work for the Okomah Lottery as one of the first investigators there, and was there for a little while, then went with the Horse Racing Commission as a state agent for about five years, and then the City of Choctaw was being the chief, and I was lucky enough to get that position, and the last six years I was there.
You're in the process, you've been hired by the City of Longley, or Inspector Chief?
Uh, yes, sir, they, I have six months to get certified through Texas and become officially the chief. Right now, I have a civilian title, chief administrator, civilian administrator of Longley, and of course, I get my certification and it changes me to the regular police chief's position.
The City of Longley, if the questions insist, and say, of all of, you know. The city of Alny, of the questions and assistance they have all of, you know, um, from our sheriff's department, law enforcement, Young County Law Enforcement Agency. Uh, we've been working, uh, wanted to, wanted an interlocal, we've been working on an interlocal to essentially provide an on duty officer at whatever, whatever shift that might be. Uh, in Alny. Not necessarily, um, under the supervisor authority of the city of Alny or chief or anything like that, still be strictly under the sheriff's department, but we're just trying to work out a deal where we can place deputies there on their regular shift. We're trying to recoup the costs for that, or at least trying to keep everybody else out of trouble. So we issued, or executed actually, or said we'd execute, I don't know, contract, which was drawn up by Allison Bass, McGee and Associates. We, after we discussed it, we filmed with our counsel, they thought it was all right. Alny's got a little problem with it, I think, or they liked some different language. That our counsel, Mr. Allison, said he wasn't really crazy about that language that was in there, and located probably added liability to us than what we wanted to assume, and, and also limited us somewhat in the ability to defray some of the costs that we had. That's kind of where we are, I'll turn this back over to Connie in a minute. Give us what part?
Uh, we've been contacting Stacy and trying to work this out, I think we've, I've got the language figured out here, so the whole party should be protected further well, I think.
I don't understand.
What, what language is that word? Yeah, what are we discussing?
One of the things I see that's lined out in yellow here, it says that, uh, when I think of expenses on something, I don't care what it is. Whatever expenses of that person should be charged to whoever's going to be using them, using that person.
Right.
And it says here, y'all don't want to pay the liability insurance coverage or workers' compensation insurance coverage on the debt. Can you give us some idea of why that would be, cause that is an expense.
Right. And my understanding is that the agreement is that there's any additional expenses that would occur that the city would do that, uh, true up at the end of the term of the contract and pay the county for any expenses that they grab, uh, beyond the contract.
There may be some, you know, you, you don't know how many overtime hours it would be pursuant to that disagreement or. There may be some mileage, cost incurred, some wear and tear on the vehicles that, um, might not be calculated in there, would limit us, and also some workers' compensation that might, we might not be able to recover insurance, or compensate insurance. Uh, we're gonna have workers' comp on our employee all the time. And we're gonna have liability insurance on our employee all the time, so, um. You know, there are some omissions or anything like that, liability is, I think we're gonna be covered. But we don't, we, we, if something causes suit, um, to the city of Alny, it, it, it all will have to participate in, we don't want any, any of that. You know, it's, uh, we don't want to be tagged also because of our relation and work to this agreement. And that was our counselor, we invited this to be a, one particular statement. Is that the county will maintain its expense liability insurance coverage and workers' compensation coverage for our deputy. Well, that, and our employee, we're maintaining that cost, we're trying to recoup the cost of that. Because that officer's not gonna be available necessarily to Young County, it's gonna be assigned in their ship over to the city of Alny. And, and it's not to Alny, but it's, they're gonna be deployed to Alny for their ship.
Right. And, you know, even while the sheriff's been helping us out recently, if something occurs out of the county, and that deputy, and there don't have anyone else available, that deputy's gonna go.
Well, he may go. If there's not anybody else to respond. But it's, or that deputy's not gonna be available to us for ordinary dispatch services. He's gonna be assigned, his duty's gonna be assigned in Alny.
Yes, sir.
So I think it may just like, I, I'm twenty-one years law enforcement too. I think it'd be just like if, if Alny was over there and there's a call out in the county, and it was an emergency situation, domestic, you know, gun fall, Alny would have answered the call too.
Sure.
Before the S O got there. So they would assist, and I think that's what he's trying to say in the sense of, you know, we'd assist until the S O gets there, and then we'd go back to the city, you know, suggest.
I mean, we're in the process now of trying to get people, you know, boots on the ground.
Right.
Unfortunately, right now, I have one full-time officer and one reserve, is all I have, everybody else has resigned. So I'm trying to find people to fill these positions and, and trying to find certified people to get the boots on the ground to work, you know, just as quick as I can.
It's hard.
So basically, the original contract was stating that we were contracting with the city of Alny through an interlocal agreement, just provide them a sheriff's deputy?
Well, that's basically what he put.
For a ship, and that we were asking for recovery of the expenses that were being used as a benefit to the city of Alny through our sheriff's department?
Yes.
Is that a problem?
We're trying to put too many details into something.
Overthinking?
Yeah.
Is it their attorney, or is it the city council?
Attorney.
But I guess.
Well, our attorney circuit has been down the stroke many, many miles.
What I'm kinda looking at, they, maybe they're not thinking our liability insurance is solely, I mean, they want us to continue our liability insurance in case he goes out of the city on call.
It is.
It's always there.
Always there.
Right. But that's, that's one reason they don't want to, to hundred percent of that expense, we have to pay hundred percent.
Well, it's like you hiring subcontractors, your house, she brings his insurance, he's covered, and so is yours.
Right.
There's no, there's no lapse in coverages here because he's working in Alny. And so it goes with the workers' comp.
Right.
We're just asking for that pro rata portion that we're spending for him to be dedicated to Alny to be recovered.
Because it's a small portion.
Very small portion.
Very small portion, they were arguing that.
Yeah.
Well.
A lot of big says they're gonna reimburse it, a lot of big say they're gonna make that expense.
Workers' comp and expense is calculated, um, because of the, the, you know, discipline, I guess you would say, that the individual's working in, law enforcement's obviously higher than.
It is higher.
How much is?
Somebody in.
I don't know, that's probably just, I mean, I think I'll get the.
Those allocated costs that come to us, and, and, yeah, we've got somebody, you know, that's servicing the city of Alny and is not available to the whole county, we're gonna try to coup that, whatever allocated cost that is, it's associated with that, um, discipline. You know, so, I guess that's, is that so much annual I, um?
I pay it, pay it quarterly.
For officer?
Based on payroll, yeah.
It's based on the salary, yes.
It's calculated into, that's calculated into that, um, figure that we base that monthly cost on.
I do it estimated at the first year, and I put the full salary in there, and it's based on the full salaries.
Right. Usually pay more or get a refund depending on the intent.
Yeah, so if it comes up short and, and, you know.
Well, when we do reimbursements, we count the salary, the unemployment, the workers' comp, and the retirement. The county's side of the expense can charge it back to whoever we're billing it to.
Now, all, all payroll costs, whatever other expenses or general fees associated with the individual always are used to calculate at that end of the monthly.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the forty-five hundred, is considered all that.
Yeah.
In that forty-five hundred, and like I said, Alny's more happy at the end of that there is additional expenses to cover that.
What's not included in those is overtime that may be pursuant to that particular this contract, or, or that employee being in service over there, various that comes down to where then the ship and the rest of Alny and the transport.
The only way we can reverse, anything extra is if we have a number of hours.
Well, I've spoken to.
They should put our machines.
Because we're not gonna.
If the deputies required or had overtime, you know, the city will pick it up, it tells, you know, how much is the time of the day, you know, overtime. So, I mean, they already discussed that, and said, yeah, we cover the overtime through his overtime expenses.
Yeah, I think the initial inter, interlocal that we offered, that, uh, Ford voted to, to execute, to present, and I think it's a, I think it's good, about as good as you can expect out of a position like that. We are trying to get the city of Alny out. Does the city of Alny's actually requesting it?
Uh. Seems, seems like the last council meeting I attended, the, the city attorneys beat with, with the, our signed agreement was about liability insurance. If there was a lawsuit against that deputy, he didn't want it to go back on the city insurance, liability insurance.
Well, I can't guarantee him that from a lawyer's call, though.
You, that doesn't guarantee all of that.
Of course, that's, that's the event we discussed, you know, generally the case, they named the officer in order to get to the county or to the city because they think they have the deep pockets. And so it's gonna happen.
Right. We're acting as a subcontractor to the city of Alny. That, that deputy is an employee of the sheriff's office, so naturally, we're paying liability and workers' comp on him.
Right.
We're just asking for that reimbursement, reimbursement for him, since it's being dedicated to the city of Alny.
Right, but that was his beef, the reason he talked to council not in signing that agreement because he's worried about liability insurance. Now, he's brought this reimbursement of the workers' comp and liability insurance, but that's his draft of, uh, agreement now.
Is the workers' comp?
I don't know. I don't know.
The reimbursement of it?
Right.
It says in line, from line.
It's been spent for their benefit.
If they're gonna reimburse any and all of the compensations, regardless of revenue paid, payroll, cop retirement, insurance.
What are we talking about, a couple of hundred dollars a year?
Yeah. It's not that much money.
Oh, no, that's fifty-three point nine, but, um.
I go type. Up there, right?
I don't know what kind of money you're talking about here.
But if there's a lawsuit, and they're in their capacity of working for the city of Alny, it's gonna, it's gonna.
It's gonna tell everybody.
They're just gonna.
Right, that falls underneath the laws.
That's what I truly mean, you know.
They're not trying to die, nothing to take over.
Okay, so, I mean, city of Alny's gonna be named in the, in the.
And they're all sitting anyway.
But I think it'll be transferred to Young County because it's a Young County employee, and I'm just, we're kinda getting some leads on that, and and that was his main drive, but we didn't wanna go into details and try to get the city council to sign against the objection of the city attorney. But now he's coming up on the page for workers' comp and liability insurance.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a large amount.
It's not, but I kinda understand where he's coming from. If there was an instance that that deputy did go outside the city, you know, then that's hundred percent of workers' comp, aren't saying liability insurance, they're just not in the city.
On the county?
Yeah.
We're not talking that much money, man.
You wouldn't be in the city any longer, he'd be back in Young County.
Right. So we're just arguing about the issue from our city.
Yes, sir.
Right, sir.
And our job here is judiciary responsibility, just ensure the rest of the residents of Young County that because we're putting a deputy in Alny, that we're getting the expenses back, that those taxpayers are paying.
That's where I'm seeing is, is there's, there's a bigger picture here, mainly besides a few pennies of liability that they could be doing, you know.
I think they're looking for lawyers and all.
Yeah, I'm with John, I think the first thing we did was, we're plenty capable of handling the situation that's in hand.
Yeah, police agents are redundant.
You know, and.
And all the city is doing is holding theirself. They got one officer.
Yes, they are.
So I need to think.
It's less than seven hundred dollars a year, all the salary's less than seven hundred dollars a year, but if there's overtime, then that also is one point nine three.
That's per officer?
That's workers' comp.
That's workers' comp. One point nine, the officer has one of the highest rates.
One point nine three percent of the salary.
And that's the complete salary of.
What about the liability insurance?
The what?
What about liability insurance?
Now, see, I don't know, the law enforcement liability insurance is an amount.
Is it different from the rest of the county?
Different.
Is it different from the rest of the county? Is it not the same liability insurance that covers my crew driving heavy equipment?
Well, there's a law enforcement liability.
There's an endorsement on that policy?
So, and, and it's a, and I can go get the, I'm gonna tell you what that, but as a whole, what that is, that.
You don't have a lot of time till we can, you know.
A little bit.
That's the thing about it, when the community finds out they're all short-handed, that's when.
Yeah, try to put them there. That's what I'm saying, Alny's holding theirself at hostage right now, they just need to get on board and go.
What is your thoughts on this grant that we have to be all signed?
You, well, you know, I spoke with, with the sheriff, and sheriff and I kinda agreed, the deputy is definitely covered by the sheriff's department, and they'd be covered if they were in the county, or if it was covered in the city. And of course, the city's covered the same way, you know, we're covered in the city, and if we came out to A U, we would still be covered by the city.
Right.
So I, I kinda, you know, I really don't know what, what the gripe is here, because I think everybody is covered by their own, and like I said, if there's additional expenses, then once it's submitted, then the city will pick it up.
And that's the way I see it right now, is, is everybody's got their own separate liability policy.
Wow.
And in the end, when it comes time to bill, we'll just bill whatever that liability insurance is, and everybody, they'll pay it, we'll go on, everybody's covered. Let's get it done.
Kind of, I should say, chief, do you even see that you will need us? I mean, do you see yourself hiring people pretty?
I am trying, I got two right now that I'm, I'm putting through the psych and the drug screening and all that.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
And.
So it may be two months, that's it.
Yeah, hopefully, I've gotten like eight applications, and out of those, uh, only the two or three have been certified. So, and, and we're trying to be careful in the hire the right people, put in there, considering what's happened in the past here, so, you know, we're taking a few more precautions along in the hiring.
All right, I'm gonna chief before I get a little back.
How many positions do you have there?
I'm sorry, chief.
Connie, how many positions do you have?
Five.
Is that including the chief, or not including the chief?
Depending on who you talk with, uh, hopefully, it, it doesn't include me, but it may, I mean, I'm still talking with, with the council and everything, trying to get them, you know, filling up the force, but.
Takes one, it takes five to, there are twenty-four, so I'm gonna find out, position, I guess.
The way, you know, my view of this whole thing is that our participation in the interlocal agreement with the city of Alny is gonna give you that time to hire correctly.
Exactly.
And we need to go ahead and get that officer in there, though, so we can keep a lid on whatever it is that may happen in Alny town.
Right, and I'm doing just the best I can by getting somebody in, and, and like I said, getting them through all the, the hiring process and getting the boots on the ground.
Right, this is the real luxury of this agreement, is giving you time to hire the right people.
Right, there's one gentleman I'm looking at right now, he has fifteen years of experience, he's been F T O before, uh, he has instructor certification also. If we can get him on board, it won't take long to put him through. If we can get him on board, it won't take long to put him through FTO, get him on board and he can help train the next one that comes in and go on and try and get people, the right people in the jobs that we need. But, you know, like I said, I put on the D jobs, I put it through the Texas website, Texas T M L, and a couple of other places, and I'm getting some responses. But like I said, we want the right people in there, so we're gonna take just a little bit longer in looking at a little bit deeper background than maybe what's happened in the past or do you think the right people.
You gotta do.
Is there any statute that limits the municipality's liability on this situation?
Excuse me?
Is there a statute that limits the city's liability in these events to three hundred thousand or whatever it is? You know, of course, you hear all the time that city's paying out millions.
And that's same way with counties too.
Doesn't seem to work out that way, does it?
That's a standard figure, but sometimes that's not standard.
Interesting.
But I don't know, depending on whether maybe you have your damages or other things that are included into it, it may not be.
Maybe the city attorney of Albany just feels like he needs to earn his salary, but some of his company.
Well, it's, it's the decision of, except the changes that the city, city's attorney have made or whether we wanna stay with the original one or do something in between.
I don't see why the original one we had China won't work, myself.
Mr. Allison, we paid him good money, so.
It's not his personal. And he, he said he didn't feel real fuzzy about doing some of the changes he's done for us, did he?
No, he didn't, he didn't recommend that, but he did make a comment that it's sports choice to work, to what they wanna do.
Does it make any sense for us to pay Mr. Allison to do this for us and disregard his advice and go with another attorney?
That's why, that's why we got him.
That's what I'm saying, I like what I just said.
Is that well stated?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the advice of somebody that's done this many, many times in these other counties.
Not just Young County.
Not just Young County, you know, and they, it's, it's worked for them. Can you understand our position in that?
Yes, sir, I, I do, and like I said, to me, it's just a couple of word terms that, that's holding this thing up. And I wanna see a couple of word terms, you know, within the city of Albany.
Well, they would, they would be presented themselves and do it because our attorney says these, that he doesn't recommend that. We accept this one.
I understand.
And that's who we've got hired to give us advice?
Yeah, and we need to go with him.
It's nothing, no disrespect towards you, sir, or the city of Albany.
Well, I understand. So, from what I'm hearing, you're gonna say you wanna go back.
We're gonna stay with the agreements that we had.
What do you think they say?
Yeah, I mean, they want to say, we don't think we're liable for all of the workers' comp, all the liability. What if they did go outside the county? Talk about what if, these are not, these are not.
They're gonna be liable, just as much liable for what they got as they was before we got over there.
Right, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it don't pay any difference.
It's not gonna be any different.
It's a sign.
But the forty-five hundred dollar reimbursement should be more than covered this anyway.
You say seven hundred?
Like six ninety-six.
That's for the whole year.
Six ninety-six for the whole year.
So, that's fifty-five or sixty dollars.
So, we're bigger than over fifty-five dollars a month.
Yeah. Right? So, if the city came back and said, I agree, about the forty-five hundred, this other fifty, sixty dollars?
No, that's, that's not what we're saying here.
That's what she said.
Yeah, but what we're saying here, line item B says, if there's anything at the end of the year, that's what you wanna do, is look at the end of the year.
Right.
If there's any other money that's due to us, any other expenses, whether it's overtime, whether it's, whatever it is, that extra mileage, then you could do it.
Right.
So, we're not gonna reimburse them monthly like we normally do, just like take the dollars?
You're gonna get your forty-five hundred dollars, whatever the, the contract states.
And then wait till that forty-five hundred is out, we have to keep track and then anything more?
Anything more at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Well, as long as you did, maybe you just did.
But guys, we may not be talking three months.
No, that's what I'm trying to say.
You know, so we're, we're looking at long term when it may be so short, it is not gonna be.
Exactly.
But you're looking at long term. You know.
You gotta look at it long term.
Yeah, it is long term, but possible.
If you consider this, if, once you get an FTO in, we can probably get a bridge FTO with some of this experience and all this of maybe it's the three months, maybe like two months, and get, get that person on the ground and get them working. Now, like I said, if I get two and do the same thing, that's gonna shorten the time period. This is better, you know, the right people and get them trained so they successfully work.
And they work so well, you mean we'll keep this arrangement for all of that?
I, I hope, I hope that we can, you know, get that officer.
I think you have, you're more generous than I was. When I was a chief, we were in a small town, I showed them around for about a week, threw them the keys and let them go. I mean, if they were experienced, they know what to do, they can find their place.
When I started, I said, here's the keys, car, I hope they don't get killed on scene.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's been a few years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while back. Then no matter what happens, you didn't do the training, you didn't do this, you didn't do that.
What do you think, John?
Well, I, I like the original one, which I think it's, you know, I think it affects the county more so than the change like. I think that's all I think, so I think way wrong, you know, this is very, very same.
Do you need a, just a consensus of, or you need a motion? We've already, we've already agreed that that was one.
Yeah, motion would be in order to do one or the other or something in between.
Well, I would move that we continue with the agreement with the city of Albany as presented to us initially by our, our attorney, Allison.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second.
A little tentative there.
We've got a motion about Mr. Sides, Senator Mr. Pruitt to, um, stand firm, I guess, to say on the original contract or regional interlocal contract that's needed. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I would, I would. You mean, that, that, she wanted for the.
Over that, three months would be a hundred and eighty bucks. I'd get an officer in there, sure, to help you out.
We're gonna just a few dollars, this is crazy.
And we're not gonna drop our liability insurance or workers' comp.
No, I, I, I said, I don't understand what's real motive for you. You have a problem with it, uh, is that the written, sorry, uh, I don't wanna, if you can rank it one and make sure of, uh, I'm saying this is one of the things.
I can give you a little talk.
Okay.
That way, I'm saying, this is it.
I'm sure that their feeders are not free.
I think, I'll stick my own opinion when you start getting a couple of attorneys.
Right, you get a lot of attorneys.
Arguing over verbiage or something that just goes by the water, that maybe.
We're hot committed to the attorney. Okay.
Understand.
Understand.
Thank you for counting.
All right, well, good to meet you, Albany.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you, Terry, you may.
Item number nine is discuss, consider resolution adopting archival plan for Young County, this will be the first.
This is the one that she presented. I would move we execute this resolution adopting record archival plan for Young County.
I'll second that. It's always good to have a plan.
Always good to have a plan.
Okay, that's a motion about Sides, uh, Wild, over to Wild.
No, most of the sides.
I'm over to Sides. Second, I'm Wild. Adopt. Adopt resolution for archival, archival plan, all in favor?
Okay.
Five over. Item number ten, discuss, consider sheriff's constable fees. These have to be done before October the first, I believe that's right. Uh, each year, and I believe last year we increased it to, I don't know what the budget for it is on that.
I just leave it alone.
I agree with that.
Move on.
We went on some, we went up on some of those.
And we wanna discuss them pretty carefully. About fifteen, twenty dollars on a couple of them.
Whether we change them or maintain the same fee, we still need to report them.
Okay.
I make the motion, I make the motion that we leave them as, as they are.
Second. Motion about Commissioner Wiley, second with Commissioner Pruitt to make no changes on our sheriff's constable fee change schedule, all in favor?
Aye.
I think last time we had copies at several other counties around us.
Yeah, we did, and we're pretty equal to what they are.
Item number eleven is discuss, consider twenty eighteen nineteen Association of Rural Communities in Texas, membership fee, fair and nice by order. Now, they sent an invoice with this, I don't think that we've ever been a member of the Association of Rural Counties in Texas. It might be a good thing, I don't know, but it.
What would we get from it?
I can't answer that, I haven't really been all that associated with them, but I'm thinking in the package, they have at least some data on that, there's that little invoice, and then Y A R C I T, you've got a little fact sheet there, yes, or about that, just for counties under two hundred thousand, certainly fit that category.
We, we, we're able.
And I assume that this is just a proportionate or allocated cost for our population, I would say, in association with that. Membership fee.
Can we table this until we have a chance to diagnose, I mean, digest that fact sheet?
Well, we sure certainly can. We can take no action at this time and have it again or officially table and bring that up later.
Uh, bring it back up next time so we can dispose of it. No way to touch it?
No action and next agenda.
Looks like we have people from the county that's on this board, directors, city managers, Chamber of Commerce, the honorable Pat Calhoun, Yellwood, City Warden.
Jack's boy.
Jack Burden, the back.
On the back.
Hope Bridge, Thor, person, Leon.
Yeah, they're just on the black. Letting's table. No action on that.
Okay, we've taken no action on that, we'll make that another in the, um, sometime. I, I guess that was the first time I believe I recall having an invoice like that or that particular group.
Yeah, I've never seen it, I was wondering about.
I didn't think we ever were members of it.
I wonder how long they've been in, been in committee.
Well. That's why I say this is time to find those things out.
Yeah. Look like we got a conference going on the first of October at the High Hill Country Resort Spa.
Yeah, I, I've got that, I've got a reservation in there, I'm like one.
What, to the, to High Hill, that's a nice place.
Ah, yeah, it is.
Kind of a river you plug.
Small and resort. Yeah, I didn't have that in there, but I did have an application if anybody was ready. Item number eleven is, oh, he did that one. Twelve, discuss, consider burn restrictions, I guess anybody wants to lift that.
Did y'all put that in the paper? Membership?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was.
I saw it in front of Vegas.
Can we take fifteen minutes, Judge?
Oh.
I like the way he's thinking.
God bless you.
No action.
No action.
We'll adjourn for about fifteen minutes.
So, is he presenting this one?
He?
Yeah.
I think so.
I made copies of what he.
Called him, called him, telling him that we were adjourned for fifteen minutes.
Eric is in Washington DC this morning, Judge.
Did you talk to him?
Eric, Eric. Testified for the Royal Broadband study that Congress has, yeah, this morning.
I think I'm bad for this one, no.
Said you thought it was Bill Flecker that told me.
Somebody's done it.
Yeah.
When he called, I think.
I have to vet the call, find out.
I don't know if you're there, man.
He called.
Oh, yeah, she's been off for too long. I'm telling you, I'm ready for her.
I told him about that and I said, good, but I'm sorry.
I didn't know if it was somebody. Sam, whatever, it's that Naco, I mean, we put him on back there. He's gonna meet Ted Cruz in the morning. Thank you, this is John Corners as well, Joey Harrington. We'll do a broadband, maybe like to do R E A, like electricity. Subsidize getting high speed broadband all rural.
I may have two confused.
Looks like that's the only way it's gonna ever be done because A T and T, like we do anything, cause there's no money.
No, that's still there.
R E A, chance, nature of the world. Sure as hell propel agriculture. Imagine all those irrigation wells that run those lickers over there. Fifty-three horse dung in the hump is at the.
Yeah, they come from, they're already, they're like, they're a year ago.
Did they?
Where there was like a 30, that.
Gasoline engine running, generating.
That was in the windplaces.
Really?
Wind torque, that, that old room, money full of batteries, they're all as well.
Work really efficient.
That's, that's a different.
That run, yes. Double lock cable, remember?
Yeah, that runs back on there, everybody, one light, center of the house.
That's it?
Yeah.
I mean, I can't. Very good. So, don't hurry up.
City council.
You know, granted, she told us that she doesn't want to learn. I just, we just need something from her saying that she does not, you know, welcome her on today and, and. I just, we just need something from her saying that she does not, you know, welcome her on today and, and request a criminal trespass of it, we, we can get it done, that's not a problem. What's his last name? Garrett? Yeah, let me know, cause I'll, I'll get the chief, I'll get Chief Orr to go back there and do it until I can get there. Cause after lunch, I've gotta go back to...
Get on my... Hey, I made copies of what you had given me. Has anything changed on it?
What have you?
I knew he was gonna ask that.
On the...
But I had to handle something. Nothing on that stretch. Okay. Is that right?
No, won't be requested.
Yes, this is what I was gonna hand, that copy, but this is what I was gonna handle now, which is that and...
Yeah, state's...
Okay. I'm gonna go back up with that right hand, but, honey, no, I'll be so happy. I like something to look at. Took a little hike. I think Cheryl asked for it. I hear from Roland.
Okay.
Is that Commissioner's Court somewhere always in?
It's been there for at least a year.
Well, it's been there a year and a half.
Okay.
I, I, cause I've been here a year and seven months now. It's been there.
Yeah.
Honestly, I've never noticed that one.
It is fairly new. It hasn't been here always. Can you hear it back here, Les? This is my person out here.
There's trouble.
I don't know.
We try, we try. I don't even think you have to try very hard. Why does everybody think I'm trouble? Why does everybody think I'm trouble? Cause we know he's not now.
He doesn't come to shrivel without you, does he? He just, we're on his numbers, he's gonna point to you.
That's what he said.
He said, bring your numbers, let's go. Which reimbursement from the state do we get on your part?
The young one?
As far as placements or expenses or...
Anything. I know we get almost all of back from the adult department, though. Don't the state supply?
State covers.
Four hundred something thousand dollars.
Half of our salaries and everything else.
Half, half of the salary.
And then we get grants for placements which cover a large...
Okay, the state pays half your salary and the state gives you a raise every year?
They will, out of the...
Doesn't Ju, adult probation get a raise every year?
Pretty much.
Five percent?
That, we never really approached the state. What they do is they give what's called flex funds that they give us that we can put...
All their funds in flex funds.
We can, we max out our basic supervision, which that grant is what we pay salaries with.
Uh huh.
And then we can put the rest of it in another grant that allows us to pay a salary.
So we set your salary or does the state? We do.
We're one of those kinda step kid things that we're not...
Yeah, I, I keep trying to relate you to adult probation. It's not the same thing.
No.
That's one thing you need to keep reminding people of, you know? We got more activity in juvenile probation than we had?
No, it's kind of...
Eleven and off?
Eleven and off, it's good.
Placements going down?
Placements are, uh... Actually, placements are going up this year, but we're receiving grants to cover the majority of the costs.
The cost to us is going?
Down.
Cost out this bucket. These grants are coming out the other bucket. All that's public money.
The prices of, of placements are going up.
As good as it pays the ticket, those places are always gonna go.
Well, they don't, they only pay, if they qualify, they're only paying a percentage of... They have to be, they have to be a felony, they have to have a pass to, they have to... And then, once we qualify for that money, then we have to keep up with all the red tape.
Do we place kids that are non-felonies?
Yes.
Really? So those are the ones that are eating us up?
Yes, we just finally released a young man that we had on probation for four years and he spent several years in placement.
So we spent a quarter of a million dollars on him for placements?
He's pretty, he was pretty expensive throughout the years.
Is the placement doing any good?
We basically had to pull him out this year.
You're putting him in another community. That's the thing, you just exchange him, move, move trouble around.
Oh, we could fix that. Couldn't, couldn't fix it. I would say he's... He might have been worse than what he is now.
Yeah. What is the status of crime and punishment in this country right now?
As far as...
Is there any punishment for the crime?
Oh.
Which lawyer are you gonna?
It depends, it depends. Juvenile, it's all, it's all about rehab, so.
I think you need to go back to the Hagen Trail and court how long.
I think stocks would do real good. Twenty-four, forty-eight hours, forty hours per hour. Not that I'm gonna be harsh.
That's where you start pointing.
Never know, never know what you can't, you're gonna say.
Never know.
When they start burning you off, you're going to say.
I didn't, you know, my husband's mad, he's like, I'm gonna volunteer my grandkids, and I'm like...
They got any more of this? Is this home to Jim Galveston?
Wouldn't he?
Either, either.
I think that's it.
They did a very good job.
You know, my grandson...
That's right, that's home to Jim Galveston.
I don't wanna see him in office.
It's good, I could bring him in.
My husband said, so he's gonna learn.
I always like to get that. Said I was signed up for it.
I was ready.
Tell you my pockets going if I'm not.
I was ready when I said, don't, don't, don't spread the...
That's not, you're gonna miss the hot one.
Get her done.
What day is that? I'm sure we young one at home.
I think they're, they're, they're gonna hide it too.
If that one at home, but...
We think you had to...
When you bring you to hide, they'll put you in.
Nice, nice travel this way.
Greater than Jimmy La... I'm very close to Fiesta, Texas.
There's always that old, memorable part that...
On the outside loop? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm a parent, that guy.
That was the beginning pretty quick. Do you play golf?
We play dominance.
The rider program, what do you think about that?
The what?
Rider program. Y'all need some more millings?
Yeah, always.
I don't.
You got millings there at the...
I don't need any here.
Where are they? When, when do you go get them? He's, he's working on that right now. Also, too, he's gonna work on, I said, we'd like to have some, some rock, too.
Yeah.
So he's working on that.
I'm in the lab.
He's, he's, he's working on that, so. But you want millings?
I don't.
You want millings, you don't want?
I, I still got them. We're actually putting them out today in South Bend, so.
But you think it's cool?
Yeah, I still got a bunch. I don't want that, bro.
They, they can only give so much rock for them.
I'd like to get that crusher that Tony had run those millings through.
My, my crusher is dragging one of them chicks foot behind.
Yeah, I know. You guys with hammers or towing down barges?
That taking the four blade of black color.
Now, I want you to know that I sent, uh, your hands home about three o'clock when they got back. That time everybody sitting around leaning on the shovel. So they told you they worked down here till five thirty. You know better.
They wouldn't finish putting signs up.
I bet they did. They were finished putting signs up. I thought, go put your signs up.
Has anybody got a bid on their... My entire...
Well, like on this.
This equipment going up? Going down?
They're going up, the spread is gonna be... If you turn your phone number right now, they need to give two hundred and twenty thousand for your... Machines right now are bumping three hundred thousand dollars.
Fifteen percent tariff on it. Anybody going down to barbecue with, are you?
This one?
And this, this will be that, if you put these back in there and take that out, it balances.
You two are too.
Yeah, I've been there one of them.
What's the twenty twin, the twin three? This one you're in.
And what I'll do is I'll do a general entry and this one comes down, they're supposed to... Cause I, there's a difference of like this much that y'all have and I balance all of it.
What's your new urban?
Now, there's not even a guarantee. I think she was gonna roll me another. See, David has had it back.
What is this, some sign?
They might have one from June.
Even what y'all do is you...
You shut up and sign it.
No, just, just pick this page up there and attach it to anything you need. Color copy.
Even if you have a whole mistake in understanding, they'll have a current, permanent statement. And what happens if this goes on here?
You go to prison.
I think I'll just keep doing it.
I agree.
Yes.
I don't want it to be, I bet you.
I know, I warned him.
Oh, I got one better now. We had one of them.
They send it.
You know, which top off and they had this somebody looking at MRI.
I killed trees.
Not legal.
What she just passed out, what did she come back? Well, the medical help, remember?
I didn't...
That's all right. That's been some interesting conversation.
Well, that's a little dead time there. Okay, we'll come back to orders at ten, eleven minutes, at nine minutes till eleven. Monday, July twenty-third, twenty eighteen. We're to the item of number thirteen budget workshop. Got force this very day, our chief probation officer, juvenile chief probation officer, Mr. P. And he's gonna get up there and tell us what all he's gonna give us back.
I thought Kathy was...
You got Kathy there, I thought she probably know more than he does.
Kathy backup on the numbers.
Bring your hands.
Gotta look at the budget, the numbers have changed from last year. One of the changes are that we have requested our parks should raise. The other thing that I need to give y'all is...
Now, this budget's been approved by... Juvenile Board, hey?
No, sir, we have not gone before the juvenile board. They've worked us providing you his actual estimates for two vehicles for juvenile probation. Right now, we currently own a two thousand and three Chevy Suburban and a two thousand and six Chevy Impala. Both vehicles have a hundred and seventy thousand miles plus. We contacted leasing department to see what it would cost to replace just one of our vehicles. With selling our two older vehicles.
Fifteen, twelve years old respectively.
Yes, sir. I'd ask you if you would purchase the vehicles as far as a trade-in and he was very nice and basically said that they were too old and...
Who was not interested?
Billy, we put him in contact with Billy with American National to see what they could do about getting one vehicle. But I think the only thing they'll do is take seal bits on him here and...
He expressed that...
Why would you sell them on the open market because they weren't interested in selling them?
What, what are they?
Suburban and...
Impala, Suburban. In what year?
Two thousand and three Chevy Suburban, two thousand and six Impala.
What's, how's the title read on those?
We have the title, I believe they're...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll take a bit of those titles.
Those are vehicles that were purchased with title boarding money back ten years ago.
Could we use that gun site?
Good deals, yeah.
Yeah.
The state's not offering grants for vehicles anymore. I contacted North Texas Cobb, they're not offering grants. Our vehicles are basically at the age that some of the officers are afraid to take them out to trains, take them out of town, afraid of them breaking down on them.
Have you had a lot of breakdowns?
We have worked on Suburbans air conditioning many times, fuel injection on the Suburban. The car seems to be holding up pretty good. It gets hot sometimes and makes noises, but it's still hanging.
You would too, if it's twelve years old, yeah, hundred and seventy thousand.
Uh, we, we don't put a lot of miles on vehicles, but we do keep them for many years.
How many miles are on both?
A hundred and seventy thousand plus on both of them. I think the Suburban, I think Suburban might have a hundred and seventy-three, I think.
Little business, you have a chance to do?
So he, he basically broke down what it costs for a Ford truck and a Ford Explorer, the Ford trucks are just a little bit cheaper. He broke down what it costs a county. And, um... Of course, there's a lot more work involved. We're just looking to see what the cost will be at this time. They all are...
Does, does Stevens County Sheriff have any cost though?
No, sir. Um, we are gonna ask for them to probably pay a little more into placements and for general funds and everything else. But we've been cut past our years, they cut our budget every year.
How do they expect you to operate if they keep cutting your budget? Coming to the county for money?
They're, they're just meeting their own budget, not really worrying about what it takes to run juvenile probation.
Did anybody say unfunded mandates?
There's a lot of them.
There is a lot of them.
We're carrying that weight. Yeah, young county is, is paying for a large majority of it. The reason for the five percent raise is due to our, our case loads are the same as they are as last year. They pretty much leveled out. Um, but since we were pulling so many grants and working on those kids, grant money comes along with a lot of red tape. It takes a lot more management. It's not free to keep the child here at the house and at home than it does in a placement.
It's still cheaper this way, though.
Yes, sir.
There's more time consumed at the local level?
Yes, sir. A lot more time consumed. How much more of this detention money you think we might be using this year? We are, actually detentions are pretty low. Um, we're more worried more about the placements.
And the numbers are a little different. Looks like something was made out of detention that should have been placement, which I can do with general entries and swap those around. So Kathy Michler, I think, has the correct amount.
What's your correct amount, Kathy? On placements?
There's not six thousand, they go?
Detention?
Detention is only three thousand dollars today. So add that other to the placement. Yeah, it's like, cause there's a, there's a placement figured that's in the detention line up there that needs to come out. And then there's two in, there's some, no, it had to be swapped. They're in the wrong. And so detentions actually are only three thousand dollars to... Um, so detentions actually are only three thousand dollars to date this year. Placements, uh, to date are ninety-five thousand, eight eighty-six thirty.
To what?
July on.
Placement for nine.
Ninety-five, eight eighty-six thirty.
Over September.
September.
That, that beat last year's year.
So you think we'll stay under on placements?
Uh, we're trying. Uh, we are pulling grants, um, but we have a young man that's coming in.
Two months in our. Next budget is.
On average. On average, a child costs one month about forty-eight hundred dollars in placement. Um, depending on the child, if he qualifies for grant money or if he doesn't, um.
You got any in placements?
We do. Uh, we have three in placement.
And that's costing that much?
So it looks like a gold.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Are they granted?
One is grants. One is mental health, which is another grant, and one is out of pocket.
And how much is that one?
Uh, the out of pocket is six finger specialized.
Not five.
Yeah.
What, you're going to be hundred dollar?
Yeah, forty-eight, about five thousand, thirty dollars a month for them specialized.
Hundred and four, about fifty dollars there.
Hundred and sixty-two, sixty-three.
So he's gonna be there this month, next month or the next? So that's ten thousand dollar money to add to that, that's a hundred, hundred and five thousand now. You see it going up or down?
The state is just, over the past years, the state has regulated the cost of placements. Basically by saying we will only reimburse the county X amount of dollars so that placements would always stay within that amount of money. The state this year changed that and said we're gonna back off and not regulate.
Have they done that?
They, they have. Um, I haven't witnessed a lot of placements going up or down, but you're starting to see placements call and their contracts are changed. We may see a huge increase and we may see them actually find it out.
Cause there's more money available?
No, because they can just, the state's not regulating them now, so they're, they're in charge right now.
Chart whatever they want. And the state reimburses us how much for it?
Right now, it's capped at about a hundred and sixty-two for the average.
So they're gonna end up fighting, you know, each other, they're gonna outbid or underbid or whatever.
Well, Dan is our new director and that's the change about.
If they get competitive with it, they get, they can get on the earth and bring it down.
I believe.
Possibly.
Also, if there's, um, more demand than there is supply, there. No matter.
We've already seen detention centers fill up.
Fill up?
Yes. When we have detained child, we have a very hard time detaining a child, putting bits, which all of us have been able to work with this. But as far as the various, you just call the detention center and the housing child.
It's gone old.
And that's because the state is contracting every facilities and filling up the facilities, jumping out of the state facilities.
So is a hundred thousand dollars too much or not enough?
It is, probably not enough. Uh, last year we reviewed it, um, y'all were trying to meet budget and y'all took about thirty thousand out of the placement to funding to cover county wide budget.
You did it for seventy-nine thousand dollars?
I did, but last year looked good.
My answer to tell if a kid's been at five.
Just a couple of years ago, we had a large cross tour house.
Yeah, very much so. Year before that, you ironed that?
What blocks weights?
We've been.
We had a change now. Well, that's, that's what I can say, it shows what he's done.
He's done a heck of a job. We're pulling as many grants as we can.
He didn't stop. Probably historical data from last year. This year may not be the same year last year.
You think you can get about twenty thousand in detention?
How much was that?
Twenty thousand in detention?
Uh, we don't know. Um.
Here's what I'm.
That's my question to you.
Here's what I'm thinking of that, and I want you to hear it. Yeah, we went with one of them with this self one fifty pickup. And we can do with twenty thousand in detention, that'd be just about half of what the pickup cost. But if you're looking at it right now, if you go through the full six months or six years, for five years on that deal, you're looking at over four thousand dollars just as interest. If we could cut that interest in half.
Not paying the twenty thousand down?
That's fifteen thousand down.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah. That would help the whole situation.
What, please? Is there a need for a pickup or would it be a, a different type of vehicle be?
Although, we were looking at the Explorer at first, but then, then this I found a pickup is cheaper than this.
I know it's cheaper, or maybe cheaper, but what is your name?
The truck, the truck makes everything the S U V wheel and plus all, um, gardening equipment and everything else that we need for community service.
Well, I think that's what you're trying to ask. What's that? What, what it's gonna be used for?
It'll be used for all our community service equipment. It'll be used for transporting kids back and forth to community service. We are driving the trains. Uh, we use a lot of officers. We go out in nights and do curfew checks on kids. We, during school, we go and check on the kids and get them out of the house, make sure they're going back to school.
Well, I just, me thinking about the name there. I may just. Pickups are popular, but I can't see that it's been issued either a van or an expedition or a Suburban or. Something like that. And I should completely cover it all the time, but what are playing? Put a cover on the back. I pick up truck, but I don't know what style that is, but it's a little more reasonable thing. I just question.
We actually looked at the price of Tahoe and they were quite a bit more than.
Really, it's just pretty priced, the only reason.
Right, yes, we're trying to maybe just choose.
And if you, if you just ask these guys, but again, we've raised four, you'd see.
Lovely. We have, we have, um, the company that we called the other day, we really wanna be able to put enough equipment on it to meet our needs. And yet also classify as law enforcement vehicle, which we get actually for rent, but I have not asked locally.
This, this, uh, people off the U F C, they're up, I figured also for police department and off the law enforcement, stuff like that. They're out of Winesboro, Texas. Holiday, Ford, U F C, Chevrolet.
Out of where?
Winesboro.
Because I'm a teeny. Winesboro. I think that's managers from the teens.
Managers from the teens, yeah, I think. But they're from dealerships in Winesboro. But that's something I'm looking at in there. I can see we're cheating on that quite a bit.
Looking, looking at the past years on detentions. I think we could do that. We can meet that cross point. Um, the only concern I have is if for some reason we run over replacements, we will use our detention funding to switch over.
So you're thinking of detention money as reserved for placement?
It, yes, sir. It has been. Like this year, we'll probably use a percentage of it.
But you went history from twenty fifteen to not be using thirty-five thousand? Yeah, if you go over replacements, we're certainly have to pay the bills, aren't we?
Yes, sir. That would come out of our reserves or other adjustments that we would have to make.
Check yours, it's flooding everything you need and I burden the taxpayer with a little deposit.
You can let it cover your own backs if they.
And like, I got a mom, you take it off the story or nothing, cause I mean, they, you know, they have like the, the Tiller's and.
Shovels and tubs.
Four, three, Stevens County.
You think Stevens County will help you at all?
We're actually, this year, we're gonna go in, um. Birmingham, Birmingham.
Let, let me ask you this question. What percentage of the vehicles do you use in Stevens County versus Young County?
We used the vehicle quite a bit until we were able to get back in the courthouse in Stevens County. Now we don't use the vehicle much. Uh, we still do curfew checks in Stevens County, um, but we still have trains. Um, we had, did follow sentence in Stevens County in the service this year.
But you still got travel time between your little places.
Maybe your juvenile cases come from Stevens County?
Uh, they stayed really low for a long time. Um, they just recently started picking up. Gail, Gail Edward, I put her between Young County and Stevens, and she's starting to pick up Stevens County cases now. So if, if wash away so much, you're good, can't, really, so you can't say it's a sixty, forty between Young and Stevens?
Stevens County probably covers a third. What I'm saying is Stevens County probably needs to put a third, some money in there somewhere.
Well, it does, uh, Stevens County cars be a little bit.
Do they first?
Yeah. Are you, these vehicles are also.
Yes, sir. And by selling both our vehicles, we're moving, you have to trade the new one back and forth between officers and departments.
Um, we've had this discussion for many times, but actually, um, the departments have agreed to operate jointly with one physical officer. But there's, it's still Stevens County juvenile probation and Young County juvenile probation. They're not, not even to dispossess, juvenile probation. Even though it's termed that.
We are gonna see a pretty big change in how they deal with things in Stevens County, where we're seeing the commissioners and the judge.
I suppose.
You're probably gonna see a difference in how they handle everything.
There's a pretty good change over there, I guess.
So we are paying some of the expenses for Stevens County juvenile probation?
Well, they, they've got separate budgets.
We have separate budgets. Do they pay for their? How many officers they got?
One, one and one and a half. We, we share one between each other.
And then Bill acts.
And then Bill stays.
Yeah, so is any of the money coming out of our budget being in to their budget over there by virtue of the fact we're using our resources?
Yes.
That's the question.
Yes.
I would even move in to get that away. Even if we're laying our heart, but we don't.
No, and what was it? How many years here do they cut us? Like.
Yeah, we've been cut out of past couple of years.
Out of the blue from.
Well, I, I would say that this is time that they pay, pay you back up if you can call.
Cause if we, if, if they were a different department over there, that department could not really come in at all. Not with the salary operating expenses and whatever.
So they didn't come out of salaries and that's it?
Don't even know, they don't pay that much.
They pay for placements, detentions, and then basic operation of the office.
You have any authority over there? Excuse me. Do you have any authority over there?
Not a lot.
If we're their boss, right, you're Gail.
Over my department, yes.
Over the department.
Over my department, yes, over the budget?
No. So you're in the, the.
Um, their budget comes up in the next couple of months.
Operations, we operate jointly with Stevens County with under one board and under the same chief juvenile probation officer. But Stevens County also has juvenile probation officers. And, um, he presents budgets to both, of both counties to juvenile board.
So does operating jointly mean that we spend whatever money in our budget we can to help them with theirs?
Well, it just means it's, it's been agreed to, to operate in a joint fashion to, um, I guess for the efficiency of operations. And it's under the, I can't believe I said the human resources code for the, for the authority to operate like that is. Counties jointly are.
Well, for operating jointly, shouldn't we be doing that? Shouldn't everybody be paying their own expenses?
Well, they, they aren't paying their own expenses as much as can. I, I can't say that. I probably would answer these, ask the question differently. They just, I don't know that we, I mean, I don't see that in there.
And they, they, they rely heavily on, I guess, the oil and gas industry. Last couple of years, they've been hit hard. As could be. Uh, just, just to give you an idea, two thousand and sixteen, they cut our general fund by fifty-three thousand dollars. That was the year that we lost two and a half officers.
That was your four legs, but.
Two thousand and sixteen, they cut our placements by ten thousand, cut our detention by ten thousand. That's completely separate from the fifty-three thousand I was talking about earlier. Two thousand and seventeen, they cut our detentions again by fifteen thousand. Two thousand and seventeen, they cut our placements by fifty-seven thousand.
Did you operate with those parameters?
We are trying. Um, they. We try to keep kids out of detention and placement, and we have kids in grants as well over there. Um, if we run over the budget, then they do cover it. We've been pretty lucky. We went in and get a lot of kids on grants.
In sixteen, this court also did the same.
Yes, sir. Uh, Young County cut our general by twenty-five, our placements by forty-five thousand, we cut our detention by ten thousand. We've been hit hard over the past several years. We're starting to run through our resources and it's, it's getting pretty tight.
What is the upper limit on juvenile probation?
The upper limit?
How much money can we spend on juvenile probation? All the way, whatever in the budget?
What are you gonna say? We're, the obligation is to, is to contribute as much as was attributed nineteen ninety-four.
And we've been that nineteen ninety-four figure here. That need to be revisited.
They always.
Those costs are a lot different from nineteen ninety-four.
They're only about, about large, uh, things. That might be.
We've looked at it before.
Not revisiting that number is another way of unfunded manner.
I would say nineteen ninety, the kids are more disciplined than they are now.
They're not placing against the kids that we used to, but the kids that we are placing now.
Coming out higher.
Are, yes, sir. They, they have dual diagnosis, they have past entry mental health. Uh, we're, we're getting kids that are spending lots of time in a special.
In nineteen ninety-two, three, and maybe ninety-four, we had one juvenile probation officer turn out, operate jointly, they have. Yep. I remember that. I'm sorry. I'm trying to consider this thing. Where's this? I can't remember what that figure was. But it was, it was very. Twenty, I think it's twenty-four thousand dollars.
Dogs that use two vehicles, uh, need for two vehicles. That's what we're, we're, we're gonna trade one. If we get one of those vehicles, we're gonna trade back and forth and have to, we want off your old year, like transport car over there. So we can make it work.
We need, we need to be recruited, so the cost of vehicles, we're gonna take the vehicle, but.
I haven't had any luck getting.
You don't have a vehicle over there or you don't?
We have an Apollo over there.
An Apollo, they burn it, Apollo, Apollo that we are.
And Apollo that nine judicial district purchased with title forty funds back to two thousand and six.
I don't think the county's paid for it.
Is it in?
No.
What time?
She's got the title, we don't hold the title to it. I guess, I probably paid out to juvenile probation, I'm not sure. I run down there and get a one.
Yes, sir, we. We don't own a vehicle that was furnished by the county. It's, it was. Yes, sir, we don't own a vehicle that was furnished by the county, it's, it was federal grants, it's like one purchase of vehicles.
They're just not available now, so the county's not actually providing.
Title Forty funding is no longer available for that type of department.
I don't know if it would be more feasible to leave that Apollo over there.
That's obviously the same thing, just leave it over there.
And just replace this suburban out here. And then somewhere down the road. That's the thought.
I was thinking the same thing.
Because that way, here's what I'm saying on that bill, that record rate would become more willing to put money into something that would stay in their part of the world. And it would be if they don't pay, that's just my thing.
And you know, they basically got one and a half officers over there.
But this is gonna be a time that you can, you can take and educate the new people that's gonna be on the court over there, why do you need that?
It's just, I know a couple of them that just got.
Well, personally, I think they'll be as wholesome for one and a half salaries.
I agree.
I agree. Really, you did, that go back to my original, you know, they need to pay their way, too.
We don't have a problem helping them out if they need help, but they should be back on their feet now, old is what they want to lose.
I know it's a big country that we're turning a lot of.
So, Bill uses the Apollo over there for what he needs to just, I wouldn't take it off their car and cover him, they don't have the vehicles to take off.
I agree, we did, we're gonna fit it over there.
And if y'all had to do something far away, you can go take yours and do that deal like that, but that way they're not a foot over there and y'all don't have to worry spending your time going back and forth.
Exactly. Probably get a hundred dollar vehicle over there back.
And also too, you're gonna get more resale out of suburban than you are installed anywhere.
I think so, too.
It'd be better off that you run it out and then, if she quits, they come get her.
Now, that's suburban two thousand six.
Suburban is two thousand three, it's been filed in the seventy.
That's not a lot of miles.
Hundred seventy-three thousand.
That's not a lot of miles for two thousand three. No, I'm just saying for two thousand three for a resale, if you get some, that's, you know what I'm saying.
Well, the mileage don't get it at stage, that's what they can get. You're gonna have somebody.
Possibly take sealed bins.
I'll tell you what, on.
No, I'll put on that deal, it'll cost us.
People will pay for that, they can pay cash for that, it's no problem. Because, you know, it'll sell easy.
Three or four thousand dollars.
Yeah, but you know, to replace that suburban right today, you're looking at sixty plus now.
The Tahoe are cheaper than the suburban.
Still, bins cost us a lot of money. Six, seven hundred dollars.
How's that third?
Four. You know, you have plumbers and all that stuff you do.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, he just, he just has a tiller, he's got the picture, he slides that slide, he slides that tiller back in. And when he's done, he puts that slide back, he can leave his hand tools back there if he wants to.
It was basically, the truck was with the super in it could be used a little bit.
Sheriff's office got its toolboxes.
You have to be inside the vehicle box to cover the slide back.
The weird thing is, tell me, with the pickup, you can get it, we can put a cover on it for three or fifty bucks, so that if all five of us have to go for training. That's what we did the DAs on.
Were you giving a cover for three hundred fifty though, let me know, please?
Put your line or something.
Yeah, rocking out, you probably can't, that wasn't much.
I wouldn't shop there for.
No, it's a, Brandon put mine on, he was asking four hundred bucks.
Brandon does?
Yeah.
He's got all, and he's got the pop-up, he's got all, all the different kinds, he's literally.
And partial pop-ups, triple fold.
Yeah, mine's a triple fold, a triple fold.
But you might think about that, if you can do that, that makes more sense, that would take whatever money, that you'll get out of suburban, put it back on that. And you might wanna use, I don't know, use that suburban money directly, set your top on whatever, but the rest don't, whatever.
Well, this judge says, is there a way to make it work?
I think there is.
You know, we could like, you said three thousand down at least for the suburban, I don't know if that pickup down to twenty-five.
Take that fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen on detention.
Your fine is on five grand, okay?
And to revisit the, the raise, I'm just gonna remind you that a three percent raise would be the county's portion because the state, county pays all of it upfront and then the state reimburses half of it.
Right.
So, basically what you would be looking at is three thousand thirty-eight fifty for a three percent raise, and for a five percent raise, you're looking at five thousand sixty-four.
I guess, first of all, that doesn't figure benefits in. Is that including withholding that care?
The total, a hundred percent of the salary.
Still not in there, Ken.
Don't let the purple hair fill it, man, okay?
The total salary to bring benefits is two ninety-seven, eight forty-eight, this was a five percent increase. The state is gonna pay back a hundred seventy-one, five fourteen seventy-seven, so Young County is out actually a hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-three fifty-one.
So, it's be a thousand and twenty-six dollar more of what I transfer out.
It's a one thirty-three.
Right, so it's a thousand dollars.
Now, the transfers out is what?
Does anybody know what that is?
Yeah, the transfers out is the county's portion of our salaries and operating expenses.
Over and above what the state reimburses? Because the state decides to drop their reimbursement, ours goes up.
Then we have no dividends.
So, that's not a bad.
Yeah, and, and we have never, we don't know how, we know how, we never have, I guess, approached the staying about upping their, they cut us, this last, this year they're cutting us, right around eight thousand. They cut us five thousand this year. They kinda moved money around, but the bottom line is eight thousand more. And I don't know how to approach them, just I don't, you know.
Well, I think if they did a study of the whole country, the whole state, about what juvenile placements, juvenile detention, and what kind of problem we have with juveniles today, it would be a consummative thing.
Yeah, I hope they would.
I owed it to these people, and you see, I don't think, if it ain't happening at your house.
Yeah, you don't see it, yeah.
But you gotta look outside their house and see what's going on, be more aware about what's going on, and that's the thing about the people up there in the state department that's making some of these decisions on cuts, they don't know. And if they don't, if they do know, they're ignored, it's in there, unless that's bad, too.
That's it, Judge?
Oh, yeah. You got the board approval.
They know what we're gonna do.
Well, you have.
It's a fair question, I don't know what we're. All matters aside, I mean, you've done a tremendous job.
Yeah, you've done a very good job, thank you.
And I encourage you to continue to try to do a better job.
You know, with that, the morale down there and the whole lot.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, I mean, people are coming in.
They enjoy it.
Like, wanna come in.
Enjoy to come in, you know, you see them.
It's not even, it's Kathy.
It's everybody else, I'm just behind the scenes.
You got a good channel.
Yeah, you do, you do.
I appreciate you coming to me about stuff, too.
I'm sorry, money is always such a word.
It is.
Like the world spins.
See what you do with them over Stevens County, that, that, push your arm a little bit, you may need educating.
Well, I'm hoping that things will change a little differently than the way they have in the past, so.
Tell them Young County subsidizing them, we'd like to see more. Seriously, hey, they got a new, they got new commissioners, judges coming in, I hope for your contact. More regulars.
I know, but I bet they told their electorate that they were gonna cut taxes.
Yeah.
It's always a problem, they get in here, find out different.
Yes, I think, I think, y'all, Stevens County's budget's calendar here, it's.
Yeah, it's January.
Easy.
Wow, that's a rough piece of paper right there, isn't it? Piece of paper landing in my.
Order, order.
Are you ready for me? Well, I'll just start out with the, with the auditor budget, I really didn't see any big changes that need to be made in that. I still need to do the, the maintenance figures for the computer for financial, I think all of the net debt might just went up a little bit, and I do have that bill and I'll do that breakdown on there. We do have our public salary hearing with the district judge on August third, Friday morning, I think at eight thirty, I believe, so, and I have not talked to him about salaries at all. On the four-ten, on the computer budget, Marsha, one thing that I am requesting is a twelve hundred dollar a year for Marsha for what she does on the computer. She's spending a lot of time on the computer, and I think she's saving us a lot of money by her being able to do a lot of this stuff that, I think we have Peter come, usually come up once every two weeks.
What are we paying Peter?
Oh, they'll listen.
They'll listen.
How much have we paid for the first year?
Let's see, this was pulled up in May, I think I pulled the current, not much, twenty thousand on this.
Yeah.
Contract, we did that one, twenty-six thousand?
Something like that.
Is it changed anymore?
What line is it on?
We take.
Professional services.
Out of professional services, now, if they get the equipment for us, we break that down and take it out of the equipment line down here.
And they can get equipment much cheaper than I can get equipment. I have vowed that they do not, they get equipment for exactly, they let me have it for exactly what they get it for.
That scanner.
They buy board or anything cheaper than that?
No, he can get a lot cheaper, the scanner that we just got, that we painted out JP Technology, is six ninety-nine ninety-nine, we got that through them, and they got it a lot cheaper than what we should have.
I, every direction I went, eleven hundred was as cheap, I get it, he comes up, Steve, I'm like, yeah. They've done us right, they do not charge us a trip, trip charge. And I, originally they were gonna do that, but they don't, so.
But you request them to increase them that way?
No.
No?
I don't think that's a.
No, it's same.
No, I said that's a thirty-five thousand.
You think you should bump that thirty-five thousand this year?
We'll see.
We'll see, I never know, right now, well, although I got a, a text from Peter that said, Marsha, there's a law, Zeno's out locally, that, that means net debt is down. And that means no internet at the SO.
And no phones at the.
And no phones at the SO, but we're working on that, aren't we, Commissioner Waller?
Yes, we're.
But, you know, he's watching the board, if we can get them on grass.
That's what I was fixing to say.
Bridges head that way.
They're heading that way, so, he, yeah, so, you know, that's, that Zeno's just, he missed out there.
Yeah, everybody's headed from the stand up.
And I've requested them to come your way, too, they, they kinda got off because they're gonna come this way quicker, but they're gonna eventually bring that in, and so I.
I love to ask those questions to Chuck Calvin, watch him answer them. Say, watch him answer.
I had, I had requested a letter to him and requested it out there.
We're trying, it's all matter of money.
Sarah went up on the website.
Sarah has gone up a little bit.
Cause they do a lot of postings.
They, they actually helped us a whole lot.
And we did have that telephone out there, that telephone, I don't even know if it worked, but it wasn't being used, so I had that line canceled.
We got noticed, it was going up, I believe.
I think that was a good idea, cancel that phone.
Well, there was something, since I use my cell phone.
Marsha uses her cell phone in there.
You know what I'm saying, I told her, I said, there's no reason for that phone.
Sometimes we look back what we paid last year, we budget the same thing this year, even though things change, we no longer even have that service necessary.
Right, right. But I, you know, I think we're, we're doing good with the computer budget, we have really come a long way and fixed a lot of stuff, or, I've just put a domain Peter worked on last week out of the sheriff's department. So, now they're backing everything up, we needed to have that, you know, all the body cameras, the car cameras in far, our, in the inventory room, or, what do you call it?
The systems upgrade, we also knocked that from five thousand to fifteen hundred. Which is the ISP server, the, the cloud.
All of that, we don't have really any control over.
We don't know.
What's the status of the cloud?
I have not talked to Scott Stalls.
We lost our spot, we lost our.
When we, when we lost our spot, it.
It knocked us all the way back.
What did he tell us when he brought that new thing out and said, we just paint them until we get the cloud at how many years, or?
Yeah, but that's.
I mean, we're not hurt because if they gave us, I mean, we've got a brand new server out there, and it's the same amount the cloud would be, and honestly, without grass fiber out there, would be, the cloud would be hard for us to keep up. So, I think this is until that internet's running out there, we've got everything in place, that internet will get there, I mean, we're cloud ready, we are.
I mean, that may be true, but their commitment hasn't been met.
Right, but.
That's the problem I have with it, that they, they made a commitment to us and they haven't fulfilled it.
Well, the thing about it is, Mark, they made a commitment to us originally, and we didn't fulfill our side, we wasn't ready for them when they were ready to do it.
I understand, but look, you'd think the years and the amount of money we've paid them, that they would push us up the line.
Well, I, I mean.
Have a gentleman in here come visit, said they were, and they have.
I can add, I can get with Scott and see where we're at.
You know, it's gonna cost us about the same amount of money either way, I mean, but we need grasses out there before they even put us on the cloud, cause Zeno's going down so much out there, I think we'd be in a lot of their trouble.
I'll appear that check.
Two to three months. Cause they're coming across, they stopped going this way, started coming across.
Happy, man. When they put, when they put the internet, when they put the, our rock here at the courthouse, they were working towards the jail, they said, at that time.
But they went that direction instead of.
Didn't get that away.
Yes.
The, the problem is, is getting all the easements.
Right, right.
That's, that's the biggest thing.
Let me tell you how, how much difference it's made, on Mondays, y'all were trying to live stream, okay? When y'all would live stream, nobody in this courthouse could scan on the RVI, it took, we didn't have enough bandwidth, it used all the bandwidth up. So, now that we're on grass's internet, we have fifty down, fifty up, or that's what we did have, we now have a hundred down and a hundred up. But before that, we had ten down and six up. So, we have come, since I've been doing this, we've came a long, long way, and people, everybody's happy in the courthouse, they're happy with the service, how prompt we get to them, what we're doing for them. And there's lots of stuff I don't know, but I find out, right?
That'll go down.
So, this is, we're, everybody is still, we're, they can right now scan, if everybody in this place started scanning, and we're live streaming. So, we've came, we've come a long way, so we know that the grass is fiber, makes a huge difference. I need it to work, the grasses out there work, besides them not losing their phones and they're not coming here, Icon, which is the JP programs, runs really, really slow. I see it, it pulls down. And Zeno, it pulls down, it's sad, Joanne and I talk about it every week, and I told her it's just gonna be like Christmas, the difference it's gonna make.
Who was it we had before Zeno?
Uh, Digital Passage and.
That NSB also.
NSB.
The digital boxes landlocked by Rockford too.
Yeah, we're staying with brasses, but I mean, we, they're doing, that's the best job they've taken here business, y'all finish, they've been great.
Our Zeno has been great now.
They doubled our service rate and went down on our month price, like twenty dollars, so.
So, you're telling me that if we had been ready at the time to go to the cloud, we've been on Digital Passage or something like that, it wouldn't have worked?
It would fail a lot, so. The more I learn, it's crazy, yeah.
Every day.
You were the.
Was it?
Never. Uh, the other budget is the inmate medical.
My computer, what are you anticipating by this time?
Well, uh, right this very minute, I need six computers right now, uh, I never know, I have. Yeah.
Well, that's the thing we talked.
I never know about them, this is, is a hidden myth, just like somebody getting sick.
It's one thing to talk to them, it's past, we've got to replace so many a year.
Then you have your emergency ones.
Then I have computers, I have scanners, I have printers, I have motors, I have, and you don't have me, there's seventy-four others that I keep it up with.
And if we can replace, it wouldn't change out five or ten of them a year. The physical year, it don't.
The first year I did eighteen.
And that is brasses?
No. I, I, I'm.
Cause she does her telephone.
We're cutting the whole budget a little bit and I, I'm comfortable with the numbers that we have here. And that's what I like to request, but this, let us say, it's, I don't know, with something that, you know, quit is a thousand bucks, just for a.
Marsha, you're using one printer right now, isn't it?
Yeah, shit, I share a printer.
Works as good, as long as I don't have a check in there and she prints a report on there, or vice versa. We need to communicate.
Get a little better about that.
I bet that run before, no?
I really?
Yeah, it came across, I think Debbie had a couple of times, she, but it weren't coming through or something like that, I was like, I could bring across that time.
Ooh, that's not good.
You make it more, usually materials switch.
And, and, uh, maybe by next year, now that I've got this new domain in our sheriff's department, it'll be where we cut a little bit more in equipment, but right now, um, it's just, um, wouldn't be that comfortable, and if I ever get a domain replaced, it.
So, once we get brasses out there, like an AT&T or brass goes down, we're gonna be fine?
It ain't a big deal.
So, will Clay County cuts more AT&T?
Well, AT&T's AT&T, I mean, but, we can, on nine-one-one, they can do a, they can do a busy out switch and it'll go to another county and you're not gonna be hurt.
Don't they don't cut that trunk line?
If, if they cut that trunk line, they'll just do a make busy switch and it'll go, rewrap the trunk to answering another county.
Why not cut that trunk?
This has been done before, that's how we do that.
You find out about it, it happens, you learn, learn by experience.
You through that railroad.
Yeah.
You learn by experience, it sure isn't expensive teaching.
Sometimes it is, it sure is.
Works you out.
Inmate medical is the other, but, but, um, Marsha takes, and she is really good working with our hospital getting intelligent rates, or also Wichita.
Now, medical supplies cost a lot.
We're out.
So, it looks like we can cut inmate medical. And you did thirty-six thousand this year, she's gonna be a marshal, can cut it to about sixty?
Yeah.
That's what you mean.
Inmate medical?
Now, there was a proposal from the sheriff's office about helping them with that?
It wasn't, what it was, he just wanted to put the nurse on full time, was his proposal, he and I visited with him.
Yeah.
Quite a bit was visiting about, well, I know we're working out another deal, uh.
Is it gonna help?
It's, it's gonna help us be a little more uniform, we had a regular nurse out there four days a week, I mean, five days a week, four hours a day, he was wanting one full time. There's not really full time position there, uh, the nurse herself told me that, I don't wanna do the other half of that.
Well, I promise you, if you had a nurse out there, she was pretty, you'd have a lot of inmates, I'm sure.
Well, we had, I'll be honest with you.
My ride, Marsha?
I'll be honest with you, we had Mandy Martin, she's doing a great job, this new doctor comes in and he kept, he keeps her there just sends whoever, when he wants, and everything went crazy. Because he'd tell the nurse, just send him out to hospital, just send him out to hospital, he don't care, we're looking at working with Joey Clark.
I thought, I thought this who we were working with, Joey?
No, we work with the young, tiny family, we're looking at working with Joe Clark and, uh, uh, it being Mandy, and then him using her and like, Joe will be, Joe understands the jail.
Yep.
He's been there.
He's, he grew up in a jail, working, and so, uh, he's not gonna be a bleeding heart, if you will, he's not gonna, there's gonna be lots of things to change, we're gonna draw blood at the jail like we were supposed to the beginning, now this people out here.
Are you saying we're going to a different contract?
Not yet.
We gotta get something, we're, we're working.
So, we'll take a more practical approach to this?
Yes, but this money will cover, cause I've used this budget trying to figure out what to do, so. But, Mike, save us a little money and have better coverage, we'll, we'll work under the Sandra Bland Act that is fixing to hit us.
So, we get better value for the money we're spending?
You got it.
I thought, I thought we were on a contract with Joey.
No.
We, we.
No, he.
Had that doctor that was going out.
Whenever he, whenever he was out there, he'd, he'd, he'd.
That's what. Yes.
But whenever he, when he moved over here, we're out of that.
The thing about it is, they can't get, they're stuck together out there, they keep changing the, that doctor and that doctor really doesn't want, he's scared to death of the jail, and so he just says, bring him to the hospital, bring him to the hospital. And all of a sudden, my stuff went to shooting out, and I go, why is everybody going to the hospital office?
He's scared of them at the jail, shouldn't he be scared of them at the hospital?
Well, the deal is, that's the whole point of.
That limits his.
Not to go to hospital.
Exactly.
Yes, you can mail a hospital.
Exactly, but he's, he's not doing that, and he's not bringing, he's not letting Mandy know, because she's, he likes her, she stays there. And, uh, there's no consistency with the nurse, you know, the nurses and everything, so that's a mess. So, Mitch and I are trying to work that out with Joe to have a little bit of coverage, work consistent.
So, you're working on that opportunity to?
To stay working hospital, and just so y'all know, when we do this, the hospital let, you know, I do the image of healthcare rates to them, and they're probably gonna throw it fit. Maybe they really don't want, want the inmates, I think, personally, but when they do, then we're gonna go and work from, um, hospital district side. They are supposed to be helping us with that.
Yes, they are.
Uh, I can send, I would send applications out there, and Steve Harper said, well, you can send all you want, and then we're paying you, but that's a bunch of.
Really, they're obligated to pay a money?
Pay some.
They're a district thing.
But they're not paying any yet.
What's our contract pay?
We have, we made it open to inmate, so.
They just have to give a notice.
We have to give a thirty-day notice, so.
That's what we designed it to begin with.
I think so, cause we didn't know that that was gonna work, but they really.
We had to leave a salute public case at this small third, like you spoke to, we knew it was a bad change, we tried with.
So, we, we will work within this money right here, but I think we can save a little more money, work this out with Joe and have, and be compliant to the Sandra Bland, you know? Which, right now, we're not, just simply because of the way the hospitals did it.
And I have a copy of that Sandra Bland.
What y'all, what do you think about, instead of going to the hospital, she's always got this practice there, we can go to.
He didn't have all the X-ray machines and one of them had to have an X-ray.
What about this one up here, do they have X-ray machines?
You mean the one on the corner up there?
Yeah.
I doubt it.
I don't. It's just positions offices.
Yeah, and, and there's times we're gonna have to have the emergency room, because if once in the thrill of a heart attack, we're gonna have to go there.
Yeah, you go to the ER.
So.
That's, that's not a big deal.
Yeah. But, we didn't go to the hospital for a long time, then all of a sudden, it was hospital, emergency, emergency, and it was because of the new doctor that we had right out there right now.
But what I'm saying is, though, if we went to this jail, we wouldn't always have to go to the emergency room unless we had to have.
No, no, there's a, there's a, a true emergency.
Where you had to have.
And like Joe said, we'll start drawing blood back out there again and doing the stuff that we.
Yeah. That needs to be done.
My wrist is hurting, could go somewhere else.
So, in the meantime, you got this doctor shut down, where he's not going.
Oh, no.
He's gone, his last day.
His last day, and Dr. Brown's gonna take over or something, it's the biggest mess, the hospital administrator won't call you, it's just. Anyway.
Anyway.
Dr. Brown's gonna take over.
So, that's what I'm stuck, two days a week.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, they have to work it, somebody.
Yes, yes, and that way they work with him.
But more than I can. Yeah, but more likely he will be there, I, I've got a feeling that I can have.
Keep hearing he's.
But the PAs will be with him.
About that.
They have to be in.
It probably, you just probably use them if you stop.
Yes.
Yeah, and those PAs, they gotta have a doctor there to be in working.
Well, I'd like to use these numbers and come back later, uh, when I get something worked out with Joe and get.
You don't think we could cut him like that, or seventy thousand, I mean, just, they strap you like that all the time.
Don't be strapped.
And it goes to fifty-six thousand for that one here.
It probably, you probably could cut inmate, the inmate medical part a little, cause I really worked hard on the, until this doctor took over, I wasn't having very many bills there. But, right now, I have two in Wichita, a mental health patient that Helen Fairby sent up there now, they gotta have the MRI, but I gotta deal work with Wichita.
They're sent over to the hospital for the parent.
Uh-huh, but I'm gonna have to pay for the MRI, but I gotta deal work with, out with them where I'm gonna pay it at eighteen percent.
Sometimes you work real hard and there's a big number of the.
Writings you have.
I can't worry anyway, cause I didn't clean her, but her good lady. How many reps she got?
She's skinny.
How about seventy-five?
She's skinny.
Come on, lady.
That's one good one.
That's twenty grand.
How about eighty?
You had a runner.
Well, yeah, for a while.
How about eighty?
I'll split. From ninety-five to eighty, ninety-five, that'd make better.
It made medical, I made a deal with Marsha, going to eighty.
I'll, I'll work harder, ninety-five.
I made a deal.
I've really worked with that.
Down the door, you're picking.
Yeah.
And I cut the inmate medical out of chemi completely out.
Yeah, because it's what she pays for those through here, and then if they, I, I'll put it on their housing bill and they reimburse us through that, so we just pay it out of the regular lines.
In there?
Yeah.
So, the jail physician will be kinda up in the air until we figure this out?
Until we, well, that, that amount will be used to.
It's still twenty-five.
Yes, that, the nursing, that will still, those don't need to be bothered, uh, what, one of the things Mitch was, one of the things he was wanting, he just wanted to make the nurse full time with full benefits, insurance.
That real?
Yeah, and I go, Mitch, we can't do that, we can't.
Did he find the.
Oh, well, yeah, because he didn't realize I was sitting, working with Joe.
Okay.
Conversation is a wonderful thing.
Well.
So, step out and talk to him and apply to him?
Yeah, he said, well, I didn't know, I just thought she didn't get a full-time job, I said, I have her a full time.
Well, you'd be committed for trying to find a way to play one.
Well, that, and he goes, he is, he is, but he said, when you put the pencil to it, I was hoping I could cut some of this up here out, enough to give it to her, he wasn't gonna save anything on the bottom line. He was just.
Was gonna make it better for somebody?
Her.
For the nurse?
And have, and have, have her there.
But we don't need a full-time nurse at the jail.
Four hours, four hours a day.
Well, I was out there the other day, visiting with her about some stuff, and, uh, I kind of went back to look at some computer stuff and she'd been in there an hour and a half and hadn't seen a soul, was still sitting there. So, I wouldn't give her eight hours a day, at twenty dollars an hour.
Her job is to, you know, receive the patients.
Call me a star.
She's very pretty.
She's very pretty.
You, you know inmates, if it's a pretty nurse, they're gonna be saved.
She gets all the, uh, medication.
Probably feels that way.
She uses the medication.
Sexes, dude.
But we have other.
I know, I know inmates.
That wasn't for everyone, so was she.
Been very.
Thank you.
Don't win late.
And I think that's a, you know, James. Any questions?
Lock it.
Well, I think that fifteen thousand.
Are you got fifteen thousand or?
Sixteen, actually. I know, you dropped on medical.
I know.
If it goes over, I know we'll put it bill some, the brasses, they're working on burnouts, but they're starting a job somewhere else than we're in this week, so it'll be a while. Ms. Alder?
Yes, sir.
And, um, do you have things, you need to collect to us?
No, well, I was gonna talk to you, and Marsha and I just got back from the TCD RS conference Friday, and I learned a lot, I think that, and I think.
Cause I returned them.
We're doing, we're doing very well, this is, this is what, and that's because I know if, if we're gonna change our rate or put in coal or do like, we, we have to get with them by the middle of December.
I would.
But, um, our proposed rate, for nineteen to keep everything the way it is, and like I said, we're, we're really doing well on our retirement, we're healthy, we're very healthy, we're. See, we're, funded ratio will be ninety-three, probably by the end of, with the eight point four, uh, eighteen, nineteen will be ninety-three point three percent. And I heard a lot of them saying they were in the eighty percent.
Yeah, I mean, we were too, one time.
At one time, yeah, we're getting to eighty percent.
I think a couple of lump sums helped us and then just, uh, maybe with our retirees and.
Yeah.
Now, when a lot of.
Lot of blood going out.
We get a lot of people retiring that may change a little bit, so.
So, the ones that retired is taking the lump sum instead of the payment?
No, well, no, even if they take.
No, I mean, that's what you're saying, that's happening here, we just have, well, some take the lump.
Some, some are, but most of the years that are retirement eligible, and when they pull their money out, it hurts our ratio.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
One of the things that helps us and hurts us in another direction, that these people that come and work two, three years, say, their money that we put in stays there. So, that keeps.
So, everybody else gets advantage of that?
See, our rate for, for the nineteen is what I'll be figuring in, on the nine months will be eight point five one percent.
I figure they can run this, I don't know, maybe for two years and leaves.
Right.
Cause that's.
That's eleven percent.
You know, the name.
It was like, that's what I figured.
I'm gonna need a lot of, since I'm on the revenue.
Very much, I'm a caro and I'm at an eight point five.
Cause they're gonna make money on this, it ain't a give me deal.
Still good, but.
Very, very good.
You know that too.
Yes, we do, for a minute.
Yeah.
That's what you're not a three, one three percent fund ratio.
Yes, yeah. Um, I mean, if y'all would like, and I don't know what Erica's schedule is like, but if y'all would like for her to kind of talk to us about it, she certainly can, I don't know if it need to be.
Yeah, they're pretty.
Just ask her to put us on our, our calendar.
Well, we have asked, we put on the calendar for her to, uh, have a meeting with the employees and some of them individuals like we did a few years ago.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, is early come back or when this budget happens.
That's up to y'all, I have quite a few numbers, I can kind of start plugging in some numbers that I have that people have requested and.
Can you do it next week, or?
Yeah. On these salaries though, what I, I think I normally do is just kind of put in the current salary and then, that way, if y'all do decide on a percent or this or that, I could work off of that a lot easier and give you an estimate.
You know, I, yeah, that's probably what I, gee, I just.
Put in just the salaries that we have now.
We really need to get something from the tax office.
I know.
What's that?
We need to get something from the tax office, probably have this money we're dealing with here.